Now we'll go back to the CEO's report. Ms. Miyamoto, could you begin the presentation?
Thank you, Chair Hart and Supervisors. So in Santa Barbara today, we have Dr. DeRinozo here with her team to give an update. But in here in Santa Maria, we also have the CEO of Cottage, I'm sorry, of Marion or Dignity Hospital, Sue Anderson. And I'm not sure, Dr. DeRinozo, how you'd like to handle this. Maybe you can go first and then Ms. Anderson can give an update as to what her organization is doing.
Great. I'd like to give the board a few updates. First of all, I know that you had a preview of the website and I want to give you an update that it is fully launched and is containing key information and updated on a regular basis, providing information such as the number of tests, the number of, and links to all the latest guidance from the federal government as well as the state government. So specifically, if you were to go to publichealthSBC.org under the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department Daily Status, you will see that as of yesterday, March the 16th, we have 128 tests collectively done in our county with 31 negatives and 96 pending and one positive. And I'd like to also give a current status report. Late last night around, in the evening, 10:30-ish, we received notice that we have a second confirmed case. Staff at that late hour went out and began their investigations. So around 6 o'clock this morning, we have some brief details. It is a person in the 50 age range and it is not a, from our first blush, it does not look like a community transmission, but a close contact transmission with a known case in San Luis Obispo. I shared yesterday at the press conference that we, as a community, have convened a work group to really look at, with the limited available of testing, how can we all be, how can all, we all, the healthcare providers, be on the same page with, in terms of criteria for testing? And with that, I'd like to invite Paige Batson, our Deputy Director of Community Health, to talk about that joint document.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. So in an effort to meet the demand of the community to, for testing, we collaborated with our healthcare partners, we, the Public Health Department, over the weekend with Cottage Health, Lompoc Valley Medical Center, Sansom Clinic, Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics, and Dignity Health to come up with a strategy on how do we prioritize or triage for testing? Because the goal here is to try to identify those that are truly candidates for testing. So do they have symptoms? Are they in a high-risk category? So that was our attempt to make that happen. And so what, the end result of that is we arrived at a triage tool that will be used by our healthcare community to screen individuals to determine if they need testing. And this test will be administered by a licensed healthcare provider. In addition, we also collectively determined what we would do when we have all of these individuals that do require testing, but how we would prioritize their testing. So we have, we, the group came up with a tiered approach and that tiered approach really would allow that for individuals who are hospitalized or severely ill, or healthcare workers, or individuals living in congregate settings, we, the healthcare partners would look, work with the Public Health Department to find a mechanism to prioritize that testing. I need to say that there is sufficient testing available in Santa Barbara County. We have sufficient testing kits. We have multiple labs coming onboard, commercial labs, including the Public Health Labs, Ventura and San Luis Obispo, as well as the state lab, to help us prioritize and process testing. So we're happy for that, but there is still a need for us to continue to prioritize our testing resources. Additionally, I just want to emphasize that on March 5th, the Department of Managed Healthcare directed full-service commercial and medical plans to waive cost sharing. So what that means again is that individuals who have insurance or medical, they should not endure any cost sharing in order to have COVID-19 testing services provided to them. So with that, I'll pass it back to Pam.
So we acknowledge that with stories in the media that our community is worried and wants to know about the availability of testing. So you have a preview, what I'm about to share. So this morning, we plan to disseminate information to our community about testing and home care information. And so I'll briefly gloss over or highlight what's in that document that will be widely distributed to our community. So essentially, this is again a recap, but in more daily language for our public. And this document was created jointly by the same group of people that Paige just shared. So even though we anticipate more availability of tests in the coming week to assure vulnerable patients and those most at risk will receive testing, we are asking the public to assist us with thinking through some questions. So asking, do you have a fever of 100.4 or greater? Do you have a new cough? Do you have shortness of breath or taking, or is there pain when you take a breath? So if the answer is no to all these questions, essentially, you're not a current candidate for testing and should not go to any healthcare facility to ask for testing at this time. We're asking that all community members follow these instructions so that again, we can reserve the most, we can protect the most vulnerable residents in our community so that they can be tested, so that they can get the care that they need. We also included in our guidance that information about, oh, technology, my computer just froze. And this is why you need hard copy when you have something. So with those questions, we also are building the capacity of our residents to further think through the questions. So if any of the above questions are yes, we want to alert our community members that, you know, contact your healthcare provider and let them know that you may be a candidate for testing and give the community a heads up that the provider will further triage by asking questions such as, are you 60 years or older? Have you traveled to one of the affected areas? Have you come close contact with someone who has COVID-19? Do you have lung disease? Do you have medical condition like diabetes, heart disease, or cancer? Do you have condition that lowers your immunity? Do you work with a healthcare or residential care facility? So these are all the questions, the dialogue that will go on between the patient and the provider so that there could be a ruling out for other sources of illness prior to testing. In our document to the community, we also cover testing, what to anticipate, and a really detailed list of home care while the community member is homesick or recovering. So with that, that concludes our update and we are open for any questions.
We also have additional, we have Ms. Anderson from Marion Hospital here in Santa Maria. Welcome, Ms. Anderson. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hi. Yes, Sue Anderson, President at Marion Regional Medical Center. I also brought with me Dr. Kevin Ferguson. He's a pathologist and the head of our lab services at the hospital and works throughout the county, both counties, San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara. And he's been on the task force that was set up quickly over the weekend with the county to get lab testing criteria set up. You know, one of the things I, just a comment, I ran into one of my nurses the other day and I said, hey, how's it going? And she said, one of our directors, and she said, you know what? This is what we were trained for. We're ready. And another nurse up on the floor said to me a day ago, said, you know, I, everything in the world around me, my kids are home, everything seems so out of sorts, but I come to the hospital and it's business as usual. We're taking care of people like we always have and always will. You know, I mean, it's not, we take care of people with infectious diseases all the time. Some of the questions I thought people might have, our supply chain is good right now. We have what we need. We have enough masks. We have enough equipment and supplies. We're also lucky to be part of a corporate structure and we've been in close contact with them on a daily basis and they've assured us that we have a supply chain to get us the masks we need, the scrubs we need, everything else that we need. We have limited visitor access to the hospital. We put in, and that's a daily kind of updated type of thing, but we are limiting patient visitors. We are preparing for a surge in census if that were to happen. We have adequate number of beds and as I said, and supplies right now, so we're in good shape. We're also, though, CDPH is coming out, the Department of Public Health. We're working with them today, actually, to do it over WebEx, I think, where they will sign off on a couple of expanded areas we have where we plan to do additional testing so that it doesn't clog up our emergency department. One of the biggest issues we've had is the lab testing. It's taking considerable amount of hours to get any results back and days to get results back. In the meantime, you know, people don't know what their situation is. And for that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Ferguson because he can take, talk a lot better about the testing.
Again, my name's Kevin Ferguson. I'm the Medical Director at Marion Regional Medical Center and also a Royal Grand at Community Hospital and French Hospital Medical Center. So I would echo what my colleagues had said, but I would amplify or really clarify the testing situation. There is no local testing for COVID-19 in San Luis, in Santa Barbara County. We are relying on the Public Health Department in San Luis Obispo County and the Public Health Department in Ventura County to test our most vulnerable patients and our most at-risk patients. And they've been gracious to do so. But their ability to test Santa Barbara County patients is limited and we've been told that we have to go to the private sector to get the bulk of our testing done. The big commercial labs that are doing this testing that you've heard about in the news, Quest and LabCorp, the two biggest, they appear to have a turnaround time of three to five days, depending on the case. Our other reference laboratory, AARP, in Utah, stopped accepting cases because they were overloaded with the number of cases. So we're in a very tricky time period now for the next, I would say, two to three weeks as the commercial labs ramp up capacity and as the local labs start to get the release of what we're called emergency, FDA emergency release kits that we can run on our local platforms. We're hoping to get those in the next two to three weeks, but it's really a day-by-day situation as those tests are manufactured that can be run locally. So right now, we really are relying heavily on large contract labs that are outside of our area. And so the testing is therefore not completely in our control. The other rate-limiting resource that we have is a number of actual nasal-forengial swabs that we use. We use those to collect the specimens. Those are in somewhat short supply. We do have enough to take care of our hospitalized patients and we have algorithms in place. I know my colleagues in Santa Barbara talked about the scoring tiering system, which is in use and is very good. We have an additional step at Marion Regional Medical Centers where we make sure that the testing that is referred to our local public health departments in Slow and Ventura County are the highest priority cases. So we are judiciously guarding that resource. We would like to open up more testing to the community, but right now, we don't have the capacity. So I do think that we should, at some point, report back to this group. I don't know if there's going to be a task force setup or anything like that so we can talk about how we can generate a larger sort of coordinated effort along with our colleagues down in Santa Barbara City for more widespread testing when that becomes available. But right now, we're asking that if you don't have a fever and respiratory symptoms, that you don't seek testing. Of course, you're, you know, encouraged to talk to your healthcare provider if you have anything else going on, but really, we are, you know, most interested in testing our most vulnerable populations, people over 60 that have, that are symptomatic, that have fever over 100.4 and respiratory symptoms. That's our, that's our target population right now.
So as you can see, testing, that's our, that's our biggest concern right now and the turnaround time is, like we said, days, so it's really not a good situation on the testing side.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson and Dr. Ferguson. We appreciate you both being here and helping us understand the situation, particularly here in Santa Maria. Supervisor Levonino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, what direction you would give to somebody? What's the protocol? Do they just go to the ER or should they give advance notice so that they don't come in and expose everybody in the emergency room? How should somebody present themselves for a test?
So in this, and particularly in this situation, communication is key. So advance notice is great. A lot of providers have been very good about doing telephone consultations. It's nice if we can get some information over the phone. And then sometimes we have directed patients who are symptomatic or vulnerable or at risk to our emergency rooms in the area. We have done that. Sometimes we're able to swab patients in our outpatient settings, in our, in our urgent care centers. That's been one thing that we've done. We've even, we've even swapped patients in the car, like you see. And that is to protect our healthcare providers and make sure they have the proper protective gear, can collect the sample, get the information that we need in expedite testing. So communication's key. I would call first.
Right. And also, just so you know, we are screening people as they come into the emergency department lobby and masking them if they're exhibiting symptoms and all to protect our providers and our caregivers.
Are there questions in Santa Barbara? Supervisor Williams?
I'll let Dr., our Public Health Director first. She had a comment first.
Hi. I just want to clarify the comment that Dr. Ferguson just made. So yes, we send our tests to Ventura and to Slow, but that has not slowed the turnaround time for our critical cases. In addition to that, we are in a partnership with a private lab and we anticipate that within two weeks, the Public Health Department can also run our local tests for critical cases. And Ms. Batson has some additional information.
Another key player for us in the testing arena is the viral and rickettsial disease lab, which is in, at the California Department of Public Health. They are ramped up to test seven days a week and we have the ability and have had the ability to prioritize testing seven days a week to get it to them. And they have a much quicker turnaround time and that's at least a day, sometimes a little bit, you may go into day two, but overall, we have at this time, the capacity to prioritize testing and submit to them. So this situation, as we've all said, is rapidly evolving and we anticipate that expanded testing will occur by also including our lab in the mix. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DeRinozo and Ms. Batson. Supervisor Williams?
So I had a couple, couple questions. One is, you know, my understanding is that you formulated this new protocol on testing to make it more clear for doctors whether they should test or not. And it's a, and if, you know, I looked at it, it was a very clear point system. You either meet the criteria or you don't. And so I think that is a reason that the public should be more reassured that we will be, number one, testing more people, but still conserving resources for the ones that need the test the most. That is the object of the protocol, correct? And then I think the other, you know, question is, are we doing enough to, for social distancing in places where people gather? Meaning, you know, if the advice from the state and federal government is that we shouldn't be having, you know, in general, more than 10 people, thankfully, even in this big room, we're only about 10 people, so I guess we're meeting that criteria. Is there a way to make that happen in a more uniform and accountable manner? I.e., should we be closing down some types of businesses? Or should we be, I was trying to think of what else besides closing down certain types of businesses could be productive in this manner? Should we be enforcing a dramatically reduced capacity for people in a, in a given building or room? Every, every room and building has a capacity and I wonder if we were putting that into a fifth or a fourth of the capacity, if that would be better to reduce the amount of contacts that people have? And then I would just wanted to ask Paige to repeat the information that you did last night at the press conference about how the disease is actually transferred, because I think people don't understand that well, that it's transferred by droplets.
Okay. Supervisor Williams through the chair. Those are great questions that you pose with the governor's recent guidance for seniors or older adults aged 65 and older to be self-isolation and the closure of bars and reduction of restaurants by 50%, but as of last night, is total. So those are, those are guidances that we, as a public health department, are grappling with. And so it's top of our agenda today for our policy group of experts. We will be weighing, we will be looking at what the Bay Area counties are doing in terms of enhanced community quarantine is the term, and what LA County is doing in terms of reduction of enforcing social distancing, I believe, for less than 50 folks in one room. So those are all the local jurisdictions are doing that we will be reviewing and debating today. And we will definitely come back to the board for guidance once we land on several recommendations. Paige?
And I, you know, as a, just as a follow-up, I would just urge you to take, to take some additional mandatory measures, whether that's certain businesses or whether that's a ratio. I, and I know you need to balance it with, you know, the fact that if you purposely tank the economy, people will suffer and some people will perish from that as well. So I'm not urging a total shutdown of the economy, but I am urging stronger mandatory steps.
Supervisor Williams, in answer to your second question on how the virus is transmitted. So if we think back to the principles of social distancing, we want to slow the progression of the virus getting transmitted to other people. We need to consider that, why social distancing would work in this case is because the coronavirus is spread via droplet. And what that means is that the drop, the virus, the particles are much more, they're heavier than those particles of measles or tuberculosis. And so what that means is that they would only, when someone coughs, sneezes, it would not travel any more than three feet. So it would, it would fall on the surface if somebody coughed and sneezed. And so if somebody is six feet away, they would not be able to inhale the virus or the particle, the droplet, in essence, if someone coughed. That doesn't mean, so that's why social distancing works. But in concert with social distancing, we also have to emphasize environmental cleaning and sanitation because, as I mentioned, if I cough and the droplet falls on a table in the right condition, that virus can remain on a surface anywhere from a few hours to a few days. Hence why it's so important to wipe down surfaces and also hand washing. Hand washing cannot be overstated enough because as individuals touch those infected surfaces or contaminated surfaces, then they proceed to touch their eyes, nose, and mouth. And this virus lives in mucous membranes and that's how persons become infected.
Supervisor Hart?
May I? Thank you. I just wanted to second what Supervisor Williams has said about considering additional measures and ask you to look at San Diego County as well.
Supervisor Levonino, do you have a question?
Not so much a question, as just an observation. First, I think it's probably a good time for us to thank all the healthcare workers and especially our county employee, all of our, everybody in healthcare, but yeah, I will say, especially our county employees. I mean, I guess that's, that's who I'm representing, so. And I just, I know that there have been long hours, not just folks in public health, but others in our CEO's office, county council's office, that have put in many hours on this. And so I want to say thank you. And I think the other part of this that I want to stress also is, I know elected officials and I've been asked many times on social media about what my direction is or what my opinion is. This is a really good time for us to make sure that all decisions are made by those that are qualified to do so. And so we might have individual concerns, we might have individual biases or preferences. I think the wise decision at a time like this is to make sure that folks that are qualified, public health officials, those are in the public health arena, to be making the decisions that affect us. And so I, for one, will be lining up behind those folks with those qualifications and urge calm and, and just a level head while we continue to follow the path that our public health professionals lay out for us. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Supervisor Levonino. I had a couple of questions for Dr. DeRinozo. I want to congratulate you on the collaboration that you have developed with all the medical partners in creating the testing protocol. And I, I know that's been significant work, bringing everybody together and getting everyone on the same page. And I am curious about the expert policy group that you mentioned that's helping the Public Health Department make decisions about additional interventions. Is that the same group as the collaboration or is that a different group of people? Could you tell me more about that?
Yes. So our policy group consists of, so there's, there's several concentric circles. So my policy group consists of my health officers, I have two, and Ms. Batson, our emergency preparedness, our county council, our chief financial officer, our EMS director, did I mention county council? Yes, county council, CEO's office, and that's rattling at the top of my head. And in addition to that, we are in lockstep with our CDPH colleagues. Dr. Ansor, as health officer, is guided by the CCLHO group, which are state, and I am guided by my colleagues in CHIAC. So we're making this, these decisions with support and with other experts around the state weighing in and as our sounding board.
Thank you. And are there strategies that we are implementing to reach out to people who are experiencing homelessness to help prevent the spread of coronavirus in that community?
Yes. So in our department operations center, we have a unit looking at just homelessness. And in addition to that, I believe that the EOC has stand-up, a homelessness group as well, to look at how can we best support our shelters and our staff out in the trenches supporting the homeless community.
So we are communicating the urgency and the need to do social distancing in the Freedom Warming Centers and the additional shelters throughout the communities?
We are, Chair.
Yes.
And actually, Terry Nisich is there. Terry's there, if you could say a few words about that.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, I'm not sure if you can see me or not, but yes, we-
If Teri's there, if you could say a few words about that.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, I'm not sure if you can see me or not, but yes, we have convened a group early on, which consists of our community services department, as well as behavior wellness with our homeless service providers, to get them out additional guidance. We have been receiving a number of questions from them as well, and that is what Dr. DeRinosa spoke to, working directly with the homeless group within her department operations center to get them additional guidance, and we are actually working on that today. In addition, we have deployed 12 wash stations for hand washing to make sure that everyone has that availability out into the community. I believe we have a release going out today, which actually lists those locations, and we're working to get additional stations out into the community as well. More to follow today, but we are in direct conversation with our community providers and working very closely with them.
Thank you for that information. Is there additional efforts that are going on to protect people who are in the jail?
Yes, we have been working very closely with jail personnel to address any exposures, disinfecting of surfaces, et cetera. So we have maintained a very close collaboration with them, as we have in the past, for other infectious diseases.
Thank you very much for that, too. Are there any additional questions from any of my colleagues? We have public comment here, I think in San Maria. Adam Clerk?
Yes, Chair Hart and members of the board, we have one request to speak. I'm a CEO of Report Today, and that's Andy Caldwell. Andy?
Chair Hart, members of the board, nothing I'm going to say is meant to undermine the mortal threats, especially to the older people with underlying conditions, but one of the things, I watched Dr. Fitzgibbon's presentation at Cottage Hospital. She's an infectious disease expert, and one of the things she described is that the Diamond Prince's boat was a bucket, and that it, you know, that there could be lessons learned from that, because it was basically an enclosed community, and as we all know or believe, this disease can actually infect people or incubate in people for upwards of a week before anybody knows they had it. Well, so I've been reading the stats on this. There was 3,700 people on board, 17% or 634 people had the virus, and seven people died, all of them elderly. And it's been estimated that if you looked at that as a bucket or as an enclosed community, the true fatality rate would have been 0.5. But the bottom line is over 3,000 people experienced nothing. And again, what I'm concerned about is the panic in the community, and I'm also worried about us going from an abundance of caution to overkill. Where is the plan, if the government shuts down businesses, where is the plan to help those people buy food? Buy medicine? Sure, Governor Nusantara can say, we're going to make sure nobody gets evicted for failure to pay rent, and I don't know how that does with the people that own those properties as far as what's the plan for their recovery, but most people, again, are one paycheck away from having nothing. So before DOS Williams or the Bay Area or anybody else starts saying, well, we're going to go over abundance of caution, unemployment is not the same thing as a paycheck. It's a fraction of a paycheck. What is your plan to help people that are one paycheck away if we do this for two weeks, six weeks, or eight weeks? Before you start pulling triggers out of an abundance of caution? The bottom line, and the other question I have, is the 80-plus percent of the people that did have it with mild or no symptoms at all, are they now immune? Do they have a natural immunity right now? And again, should that be a message that's being sent out there? Like I said, I feel like there's been too much panic in our community, which is leading to hoarding, and that is with people with the supply chain and before an economic crash. You could literally start inducing rioting by cutting people off from their work and their monetary supply to buy basics, and I think you need to take due caution that the panic response isn't turned out to be worse than the virus.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Is there anything else, Ms. Anderson or Dr. Ferguson, would like to add?
No, thank you, unless you have any other questions.
Thank you, and thank you for being here to help spread the word. I appreciate you being here to provide professional information. Mr. Caldwell talked about panic. I don't think anybody's panicking. Everybody is engaged and fully committed. As you described, you are executing the plans that you have developed over many years, and your people are trained to do. Same thing is happening in South County. The public health department is actively working the plan that they have been developing for many, many years and doing the work that they have been trained their entire careers to do. There isn't a sense of panic. There certainly is anxiety in the community. All of us feel that. People internalize that in different ways. One of the most important things, I think, is opportunities like this to get out the information to the community. So I want to remind people that the public health department has a website that has a lot of information, it's very well-vetted, and it can be found at publichealthSBC.org. That's publichealthSBC.org. We also have a call center where people can call in and get information directly from the public health department. That number is 833-688-5551. There is a lot of information that is circulating on the internet of varying quality. There were some emails that went out, mass distribution lists over the weekend that turned out to be hoaxes, so people should be very careful about where they get information about what to do. But fundamentally, the message is still very simple. If you are feeling symptoms, stay home. If you are older, please stay home. Wash your hands regularly and disinfect surfaces regularly, and practice good public health, social distancing hygiene. That is the best tools that we have available to stop the spread of this virus and return things as quickly as will be possible from effectively doing that. And all the public health professionals are saying the same thing in these briefings, and it's up to us to act on that advice. So thank you all for being here. If there aren't any other questions from my colleagues, Supervisor Williams?
There is just one more, because I mean, I think this was mentioned by the head doc at Marion, is that we don't have in-county testing resources, but we have, it's been expensive, of course, but we have maintained a partially capable testing lab, and my understanding is that the goal is to try to get that back up so that we can expand our testing resources, is it not?
So it's actually a partnership with a private lab. We have the machines, and they have the staff, so it's really a public-private partnership, and we're anticipating it'll take about two weeks, and then we will connect with the state for those lab kits.
And again, clarify that's...
That should be reassuring.
Yeah, it is reassuring. That's what I talked about. I said we're in a one-to-two-week kind of tricky period here, and that we anticipate there's going to be much greater capacity, not just locally, but also in the commercial laboratories. The FDA has rapidly approved a variety of platforms for this testing. So this is going to, this is going to look very, it's going to be a very different situation in the next three or four weeks, but we just need to really, really restrict testing in this immediate period, and so that was what my comment had to do with. Right now, in county, we're not able to test very many patients. We have gotten great support from our partners in San Luis Obispo County and Ventura County. The sickest patients, the most vulnerable patients, we are able to get those test results back within 24 hours, but we have only a limited number of spots on those runs, so that's why we have to guard it so judiciously. So for the next couple of weeks, that's where we really need everyone to stay calm. I like that statement. You know, if you're sick, stay home, and if you are symptomatic, if you do have fever and respiratory symptoms, call your doctor. We do have folks in emergency departments that are ready to take care of you.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for that additional information. One thing Supervisor Adam asked me to relay to the larger community, unfortunately, he's not able to be here himself, but as a large farmer, he is in the process of delivering the food that we eat, and he is hoping that agricultural employees who are well and healthy can continue to work. They're a critical part of the food supply chain, and I know that he intends to be practicing social distancing at his businesses to make sure that everybody is safe who's doing that work, but having those folks continue to be available to get the product to our markets is part of this critical supply chain that we rely on, too. He did want me to mention that specifically. All right, is there anything else that anybody would like to add before we go to the next Supervisor Hartman?
Chair Hart, I did have a question. Thank you. We, my question broadly is, how is this affecting county departments and county services? We heard about the window at planning and development. We can see all the seat unavailable. We are practicing social distancing here, but what else is the county itself doing? Or will we have a website that people can consult to see changes in our policies?
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman. This is Mona here. So the departments have started to implement their continuity of operations plan, meaning they are continuing to provide essential services, and we ask them to do it in a safe manner for the public and their employees, and for non-essential services, to look at alternative ways of providing them. So we talked about what the planning department is doing by having drop areas for the plans and taking appointments over the phone, et cetera. Public Works is doing the same. Many of our departments are doing that. We are not in the same situation as the Bay Area counties, so again, there is no shelter in place here. We're following the lead of our public health department, but departments have started to look at other ways of providing service, and we are, just recently, I asked departments to provide me a list of how they're providing services differently, and we'll get that out soon. As you know, even today's meeting, the clerk of the board, we posted different ways of contributing to the meeting, and we asked our departments not to attend unless they were essential members to provide input to the board. So we are looking at different ways right now, and that will just accelerate in the next few days.
Thank you. I think this concludes this item. Thank you, Dr. Von DeRinosa and Ms. Batson and Ms. Ferguson, Mr. Ferguson and Ms. Anderson. Thank you both for coming and everyone providing this information. I think it's been very helpful to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back for the departmental agenda.